We're watching later. We did start our meeting at five o'clock and went into a work session. So we are picking up the agenda at item number five, which should be adoption of the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of July fifteenth, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the agenda? It's a lot of pages, but just because we're going through a lot of names, it looks like. Roll call, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Liotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Item number six, communications reports. Item A is hearing of the public. We do have Mr. Gonzalez. If you want to take the microphone, I'll read through real quick kind of the engagement here. Presentation is limited to five minutes per person. Let's give it to any resident Lebanon City school districts having legitimate interest in the actions of the board. May participate during the public portion of a meeting. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually, and the presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when this statement is too lengthy, personally directed, repetitive, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So that being said, if you would introduce yourself and state your address, please.
My name is Juan Gonzalez, six Oakwood Avenue, Lebanon, Ohio.
You're good. Go ahead.
Well, basically, I'm here to report a serious problem we have here in the Lebanon School District of abuse and bullying, not only by students, but by actually faculty and coaches. That's been long-going, a long history of this. These things have been reported for years, but have fallen on deaf ears. And so I'm here now to put a final statement out there as my plans to move forward. Just getting started, it's about Brian Kendall, the softball coach here at Lebanon High School. He's mentally abused and bullied girls so bad that they either quit the whole sport of softball altogether, or they fight through it like my daughter did to try to make it to the end. She's going to be playing at the University of Dayton in the fall. She got $200,000 in scholarships between academic and her athletic. I take this very, very seriously because I don't make a lot of money, but what I've done is I've invested everything I've had over these last nine years into my kid. My parents came from Mexico illegally, so this is just bigger than the game of softball to me. But, you know, a lot of people have asked me, why are you even saying anything now? She's already graduated. I'm not going to let it go on any further. I mean, just talking about it the other day in Scripps Coffee House out of coincidence, a girl that worked in there told me that Brian Kendall made her quit the game of softball altogether. I didn't know this girl, never seen her before in my life. Me as somebody that supports girls athletics, it hurt my feelings. But I've reported this systematically to the principals. Both of them, they don't care. To Mr. Severs, he doesn't care. Not even a phone call back from Mr. Severs with these facts that I presented to him and that I'm willing to back up, not only by with my daughter, but other girls that are currently on the team, other parents, former players are willing to talk about this other than myself. In a day and age where these young minds are still forming, it's such a serious matter. Literally, the abuse that he calls my daughter, like I was scared to look in my daughter's bedroom sometimes because I didn't know what I was going to find in there. So it's kind of funny, you know, reporting this to all the people that you're supposed to go in the steps and report it to in the right way, and they do absolutely nothing about it whatsoever. I even went to the head of resources, human resources, Brian Dalton, and left a message as kind of a final plea. And instead of giving me a call back himself, he forwarded that back to one of the participants in the covering up of Brian Kendall and his actions, which is Keith Pantling, the athletic director. So with this kind of mindset, this stuff gets buried. These girls have to suffer dealing with somebody like this. To steal a girl's confidence in a teenage years, it's one of the most devastating things you could do. And I'm sorry, as part of this community that I've lived in for almost my whole life, I will not stand by and let it go on any longer. And that's the gist of it today. I mean, I think people need to be investigated here because it is our kids at risk. There's been a couple of girls that aren't here anymore in this, from this town. And contributing factors that are similar to this could play into stuff like that. And it's everybody's, it should be everybody's issue in this room, in my opinion. Everybody's. And I'd like to see something done, but if it's not, I have to keep on going until somebody does listen to this to solve this problem. All these reports of all of this and not a single phone call, Mr. Severs told me he's never heard a complaint about Coach Kendall. I call a lie on that one. I call a lie because I know other parents that have called and reported. It's, these kids are falling through the cracks with the administration. It's not fair to them. And that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight. I did take a bunch of notes, and obviously, we heard what you were saying, so.
You know, just a side note, my daughter was getting bullied by a girl that was three times her size, literally. And we reported that through the proper channels. They wouldn't even split up the lockers that they were side by side. They wouldn't even do that for us, right? Well, on videotape, this girl attacked my daughter from behind and beat her into a concussion, where everything we've worked for all these years could have been just thrown away. She's lucky she's getting an education. I thank God for it still, and she can play some softball. But things haven't been the same since that time. And that's just another time. And there's a lot of them. There's a lot more to go. I mean, I could sit in here and take my five minutes every week or every month or whenever you have these meetings for a long time from now.
Okay. We appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you.
Item B is the superintendent's report.
I don't have any presentation for you, and I've been trying to share information as it happens. But a couple of things to note about summer projects. They were supposed to begin the stadium bleacher installation in terms of the steel and the aluminum this week. Some delays on the previous job due to weather, and so they'll be later this week when that arrives. But once the steel structure begins going up, it'll be 10 days. And so our home bleachers will be done there at the stadium soon. We're still looking at having all of that done, but we got a push on electricity and technology and things like that, once the bleachers are in place, to get that finished in the hopes that it still is done by August the eighth on Meet the Team Night. That'll be a push with some of those ancillary things around it, but the bleachers themselves will be up. The high school roof project, just as a reminder, there's been some information shared on social media. It's also on our website right now. They've taken off all the shingles on what was remaining. The metal roof is on site, and again, we're waiting on the installation company to finish up another job, but that should be starting soon with the metal roof panels going on, a large portion of the high school. And the hope was that we'd have a lot of that done before school started in the academic wings, and we still think we can get some of those academic wing things done and move to the non-academic wings to finish in August and September. And then they'll begin, we'll be sharing information really through the website and social media in the next couple of weeks, but there may be some parking lots that are closed for a day as we are doing crack filling, seal coating, and restriping of parking lots across the district. And then you started at Berry, and they're moving their way around the district. So those are some things that are happening this summer. We're looking to share that information in a couple of ways, through the website, through social media, and also just kind of promoting out through a newsletter or a flyer going out to everybody in the district soon. What's happening, what do we do during the summer, right? I mean, the summer is huge time of, they take all classroom furniture out of classrooms, they strip and wax the floors, they put things back. It's a major deep cleaning, but it's also the time that we do a lot of these maintenance things that are paid for by the permanent improvement levy that our community passed as a renewal. And so we just want to make sure we kind of talk about the things that we're doing to maintain and our facilities as we move forward. So that's a little update on the summer projects and be looking for that information on social media and on the website here in the next couple of weeks as well. Photos.
Thank you. Item C is board committee reports. A would be student achievement liaison. Mrs. Dalton?
Okay. A few things going on this summer. I think this week, the football team worked with the Mason Football Team, which was a really great program, that all of these football players got together and put together, I think, 24,000 meals. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Approximately 24,000 meals. And the news thought that this was something noteworthy because they interviewed our football coach and some of the students, and it's just kind of an example of what we try to do to outreach to community and to teach kids more than just the sport and team building and working with your competitor and good sportsmanship. So that's a nice example.
I was going to say, we did not strategically place him in that picture.
Yeah, way to go. Strategically placed him in the middle of the screen there, so.
Okay, yes, good. And this is our band, and they were a part of the Independence Day Parade on July the third, which took place in downtown Lebanon, and the walk was a little over a mile. And it was great to see all the Lebanon students out there supporting this community event and very fun patriotic afternoon.
And it tells you the physical condition that they're in, because it was hot, and they're playing their instruments for over a mile.
Yes, yes.
Pretty impressive.
Yes, and there were a lot of students, and there were a lot of community members with younger students that were watching the parade. So I think this is just an example of how involved our school district is with the community and how well we work together.
Thank you.
Sure.
Item B would be CAC Committee.
Well, we did not have a meeting this month, but our next meeting is Monday, August the nineteenth at 5:00 PM, right before the board meeting in this room. So I hope everyone comes and listens.
Thank you. C legislative liaison, Mrs. Cope.
There, our legislators, legislature has been very busy lately. There are many things that have been going back and forth between the House and the Senate, some things that are currently going to be heading to the governor. Would be, let's see, House Bill Two, which is the Senate Finance Committee amended a bill to replace original language with appropriations for the capital bill and a one-time strategic community project planning. This bill included 600 million for construction and renovation of K to 12 school buildings. It's now headed to the governor for his signature, and there are pages of things, that's one example, of things that are headed to the governor. That would be one, though, example. Another would be the way they're going to be calculating. There's the things about, first of all, teacher licensure and revocation of teacher license and hiring practices, which we've talked about in the past. The House and the Senate have now come to agreement on some things, and that should be going to the governor. There's a law, House Bill 496. This bill would revise the law governing property taxes and county auditors. That's also headed to the Senate for some more revisions. The Senate has passed a bill that's now headed to the governor, and this is about technology. Some things that have been in place with technology, we've had different things changing throughout school districts, but some things that are notable now, our districts are now able to, they have always been able to monitor and access school devices. But now, instead of permitting access to only respond to imminent threats, they're now allowed to access devices to respond to something that they just considering a threat, consider a threat. Districts have to, are required to notify parents that they're monitoring students on their devices. Districts are responsible for providing notice of the monitoring of the school devices to everyone involved, so be it students, teachers, everyone, which I thought was something that we already do.
We already do, and we've notified them. So we use a, we use a system called Securely, and Securely is monitoring what they're doing within Google Classroom, Google email, Google Drive. If it, if it's picking up on keywords, it's picking up on phrases, searches. So we're blocking searches of certain types of things through a filter. But also, on the monitoring side of it, is the ability to go back and see, you know, when we've had some incidents, or it does send the administration an alert if somebody is searching for or writing things in there, and there are things that are alarming. So we communicate that through, you know, when they get devices. We've shared, parents have the ability as well to have access to view their kids' search history and activity. And so if they want to see that, they have parent access to Securely. We will share all of that information again as we start school, as a reminder and a notice as well, so.
So these are things that are becoming mandatory, but this were, one thing when I read this, kind of, I felt like Lebanon was ahead of the curve on that one because we've been doing that, it seems, and continue to monitor those things.
I think a big part of it is the notice that has to be given, and the other part of it is that people were using it for other things other than imminent threats. But it's also one of those issues where, as a district, we're giving them the device and access to the internet. We don't, should not be allowing, you know, internet bullying and things like that to be taking place as well. So we have the ability to monitor that, we should, so.
That's all I have.
Thank you. And the Warren County Career Center, a couple of updates there. We had our meeting last month. Wait a minute, was it, yeah, last month was, we had a few resignations, so we hired some or approved the contracts to hire some new administration up there. And then this past weekend, the Career Center held an auction to get rid of some rather large items and just some that hadn't been used for a while. The preliminary numbers is they made about $20,000 in the auctions. That's a, that's a big win. Item number seven, approval of the minutes. Sign a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting on July ninth, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the minutes that were presented? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Liotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number eight, board member appointment. Need a motion to approve the appointment of Mike Liotti to the CAC Committee and replaces me on that board.
I will make that motion. Gladly.
Mike Liotti, a real question.
Mr. Liotti would do that motion to get himself on that committee, but.
I'm glad to help.
I think we need a second. Did you change yours to a second? Are you going to fight for the first?
I mean, I think I got it out before you.
I think you did, too.
I'll just second it.
I think we're all in agreement. You need to go.
Sounds like it. I'm going to be here on five o'clock on the nineteenth to make sure I make my voice heard.
The real question is, is do you like 7:00 AM meetings or 5:00?
Do you like 7:00 AM, please?
7:00 AM is wonderful.
There we go. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Liotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number nine, need a motion to approve the financial items A through J.
So moved.
Second.
There's the first one. There we go. So Mrs. Urban, we hand it over to you.
All right, so we ended our fiscal year, so we are a June 30th school district, most of them are. But it was pretty fun this time, and I'll get to where I'm excited, and you can laugh again, that's okay. This is our May forecast, so the green box is where we were projecting that we would land. As we say that, I say this a lot, but you know that the further out you go, the worse projections it gets, the worse guessing I can do, right? So hopefully, when you're at the year that you're ending, you're going to be pretty close, right? That's the goal. That's your starting place to know if the forecast is anywhere near what it's going to be. We also know that at the end of this five years, it's not going to be anything like what this forecast says because every six months I go in and change it, modify it. So just keeping that, those pieces in mind. Going into the next screen, you'll show, you see we are 12 months in, and the gray line is where we actually ended. The red line was our estimate. The blue line, this is where you want to look on this scrap currently. That was where we were at last year. So as we projected, we are less than we had last year. We finally started the deficit spend. We'll talk about that a little bit, but we knew that was coming. We've been seeing that in each of the forecasts, so that did actually come into fruition. You'll see there that we are still at 119 days of operating cash, our goal being three months, which is the 120 days. It's not three months, but our goal being at 120 days. We anticipated ending at 123. So we came in a little bit under target of what we thought, but it's very close, and it is close to that targeted timeline. So looking specifically at our receipts and our expenses, here's where I got a little excited. I don't think I'll ever see this in my career ever again, so I'm going to start with the expenses. The variance between what we actually spent and what I estimated was only $26,500. To put this in perspective, we spent a total of $69 million. That's awesome. Never going to happen again, so I'm going to be really excited. So we were still slightly under the 100%, which is always a good thing, right? You always want to come in slightly under, but you don't want to be so far under that your estimates don't make sense. So really good projection there. Revenues is still good, not as good as the expenses, but we came in over budget. Again, a good thing. This was related, like I said, last month, this was related to that extra tip payment that we didn't expect. We received most of them, and then this one came in higher than anticipated. It was specifically from Turok County. So I gave you this last year, and I thought it was a pretty good tool, just to kind of look at what happened last year to this year. If we're looking at our property tax, which is the most revenue that we get, right? This is our primary source of funding. We are about $1.5 million to the good this year as compared to last year. I tried to pull out, what does it look like for our substitute levy that passed? What does it look like for just regular property tax growth? And just to give you some comparison, last year, when I showed you this chart, we had increased by 2.4 million. So the increase slowed this year. I think it's still predominantly new houses coming online. I don't think we're seeing much on the substitute levy yet. I'm hopeful that next year we'll start to see that. But also knowing that the growth seems to have slowed this year, so it might not be very big on the substitute levy side. The foundation funding, which is our second primary source of revenue, is about $803,000 more, which in the scope of 20, 21 million, not a tremendous amount, but it's helpful. Just a reminder there, we are on the guarantee, so as our property tax income raises, our formula income technically decreases, but because we are on the guarantee, it stays static from the time that the state legislature passed that guarantee. This increase is predominantly based on our actual student population, and I think we talked about this last year, too, where we have an increased subset of special needs students, and a lot of that is coming in. We also saw an increase on transportation funding because the state is funding it at a higher level. So those are the bigger changes there. The other revenue, this is hopefully the last time I have to say this, the decrease here is related to the change that we did in advances. So we were doing those month by month by month advances. We've stopped that. We only do one at the end of the year. So that number should be pretty, pretty equal next year. On the expense side, you'll see the wages and benefits increased about 2.1 million. Just as a reminder, we have about 726 employees, so this is absolutely, we are in the cost of employing people. That is our primary expense, wage wages and benefits. Just to give you an idea, again, comparison, last year I gave you this, the increase was 3 million. The year before that, it was 4.4 million. So it's actually the least in the last three years, but it is still substantial. And every year, you'll see that substantial growth with wages. So we, I think that's pretty important to say, I guess. We've made a lot of personnel shifts. Hires, you're going to see a lot, the new hires, replacements, but I think the HR department's did a great job trying to get those at a lesser cost with just as much benefit in here for our students. On the materials and supplies side and the purchase services side, we've been monitoring this all year. Those did come in higher than last year. This is the same thing that happened last year. The services, again, almost all of this, not all, but a lot of it, is our student population. Those growth periods where we have a lot more special needs, we have to outplace students. Those are very expensive. We get partial reimbursement, but not all. And then even the in-house services to meet the needs of all of our students. And then capital improvements, this one is a super tiny dollar amount. I put it on there because it's something we monitor. But most of our capital improvements, we tried to move out into the capital levy fund so that we're recording those expenses against that specific property tax revenue. So it's a very small dollar amount, and then the other expenditures here, there was no change. So taking a look overall, our cash balance, you'll see that, again, our expenses exceeded our revenue. So in total, our cash decreased about 2.4 million. That's a little bit deceptive, however, because we did advance one of our capital improvement funds about 701,000. And advance is a return, it will be returned. So once those donations come in for some of those facility projects, like the stadium, we will repay the general fund. So this, yes, it was 2.4 on paper, but also know that it is owed about 700,000. So it's a little bit different, but definitely a deficit spend. So now the name of the game is, can we minimize this deficit spend? Based on the forecast, if you remember back in May when I was presenting that, this upcoming year, we expect a bit of an anomaly as some things like the pipeline, some of the other property tax things pan out that we were expecting. So hopefully, we'll see, we won't see a big decrease, but really, going into the future, we're going to have to be careful about how we're spending, where we're putting those resources, just to maximize how long we can go with the current levies without asking for any. So taking a look, this is your forecast. Again, just giving you a picture, the red circle is how much we thought we would be under, which is slightly more than what we were actually under. So even though we are deficit spending, it's a little bit more favorable than we anticipated. Great thing, it's mostly related to that 400,000 revenue that we weren't expecting. So, good news, and you can see, if you back up one really quick, you can see that we are still deficit spending in the next year, but it does decrease. So I'm curious to see how that will, you know. So I'm, I'm curious to see how that will, you know.
Thank you. To go through the rest of the financial items, B is monthly reports, C amended appropriations, D amended certificate of estimated resources, E is a fund transfer.
This is your standard from Title II A to Title I.
F is a couple of donations, special thanks to the athletic boosters. Nice donation, the athletic department is $17,000. G is approved donations for student lunch accounts, Isaac or Karen, one of you explain this.
So this is something we started new this year. We had a lot, we've always had students who end a year with a deficit lunch balance, and we've had a lot of discussion about that. We also have a really significant population of students who end the year with a positive fund balance in their lunch account. We gave parents the option this year, you can request a refund, you can transfer the money. You have a sibling that needs the money, you can transfer, or you can donate. These are, these are students' parents who said we could use their funds that were over $20. They had more than $20 sitting in the lunch account, and they let us use that to help students in need. So we're bringing it to the board just because of that dollar threshold. Just want to make sure that we recognize and thank those parents for, for that.
So what happens if it's under $20?
We still use it for those students, they're just not on this list. So it was a much larger list, but we're talking, there could be kids with a penny all the way up to $20.
Got you.
So it's a very large list.
H, advance from general fund to the junior high Renaissance fund.
This was the only fund that was deficit that needed an year-end advance. So this is, if you remember last month, I said I'd bring back the actual advance, so you could approve it.
And it's a small $322.
Yes.
I closed the junior high athletic concessions fund and transferred to the junior high athletic fund. And J is approved service agreement between Lebanon City Schools and the Montgomery County Educational Service Center. Any questions on A through J?
Mike, just want to thank you for the, you and Amy for the donation.
Of course.
I see a thousand there, so that was very nice.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 10, I need a motion to approve policy 5136.
So moved.
Second.
And this is the personal communication devices, I believe this is for the high school.
This is K-12 policy, but the change for next year will be, at the high school will be the, where the change is felt. So this would be the cell phone policy we discussed last month, where cell phones are allowed before school, after school, during lunchtime. During academic times, need to be kept in their lockers or off in a bag. So we will begin the communication of that pending board approval. But we've actually had some parents reach out in the last month, some that didn't watch the board meeting last month and ask if this is something that we would be considering because they saw the governor's recommendation to do this. They were, these, these parents were supportive of it. I won't mention their names on the speaker tonight so their kids don't get mad at them. But for those of us who have kids in school, I'm sorry, you know, cell phones are gone. But I think it's, I think it's the right move to make. A lot of the research around this is pretty, is pretty strong in the favor of kids need, they need to be able to focus their time and attention to the academic functions. And we'll see, so.
Excellent. Mrs. Urban, I heard that Mr. Gliotti would like to do the first yes vote, if you could call him first, please.
My, my son is not listening this evening, I think. Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 11 is public records requests. Item number 12, we'll do these separately. So I need a motion to approve this other educational items, but A is overnight out-of-state extended student trips. You can approve all of them, right, Karen, at the same time? Well, let's do A through C. Let's do A through C. So I need a motion to approve items A through C.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, A, as I mentioned, was overnight out-of-state extended trips. There are five listed here. I think these are all athletics this time, they are. Item B is to approve 24 different handbooks, ranging from just student staff handbooks down to multiple sports and other activities. And C is to approve the calendar for the 25, 26th school year.
We discussed it last month, the teacher survey results or staff survey results supported one of them pretty overwhelmingly. There was really no reason for us to not accept that recommendation from our staff. And so the calendar that was put before you this evening was the option that was in alignment with the, the feedback and the results of the staff, so.
Any questions on those? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I think you forgot your name for a second. Item number D, or item number D, item D is a very special one. We have a, I need a motion to approve the LHS diploma for Mr. Dustin Joseph Bennett, who is in attendance tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Isaac?
Yeah, so Dustin, welcome. I'm glad you stayed through the 35 minutes so far of the board meeting. Ohio law allows for the district, for, for residents who live in our school district to go back and pursue their high school diploma up until a certain age. And so Dustin has satisfied the requirements of the Ohio Department of Education and the Lebanon City Board of Education. And so in review of that, I'm asking that the Board of Education issue him his Lebanon high school diploma. And would you like to step to the microphone and say anything about, you're fine? Okay, well, we'd like for you to come forward if you don't mind, we're going to have.
Can we approve it first?
Well, yeah, approve it first, go ahead.
Roll call, please.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
How do you go up there and he'll take care of it, and we'll get a photo with you, and we'll, with your permission, promote this out, that's okay? Okay. We're going to open it up, world's city. All right, congratulations. I think, I'm going to, there's, can we go this way a little bit? There's a layer behind you. You're fine, you guys, you guys, you're good. There's a weird.
Off the top of my head, don't think.
Yeah, you didn't say that. Make sure it's clean.
Now it's scratched.
Now it's scratched.
Oh, that's much better.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks for coming.
Well, we need to figure out.
Yes. We can request it one more time.
Probably once I ask for the adjournment.
Okay, before that, yeah.
Item number 13, personnel, I need a motion to approve, I think I'm okay going all the way A through O.
So moved. Second.
I'm going to read through these real quick so people know what we're doing. A is a couple resignations, B is employment pending background checks, C is a list of supplementals, paid supplementals. Skip a whole page. D is the board resolution for non-licensed coaches. E is the volunteer supplementals. F is a change of status for a few folks. G is a list of volunteers pending background checks. H, leave of absence. I is long-term certified subs. J, permanent building subs. K is a list of interpreter services. L is transportation, substitute employment. That's a lot of pages. M, game workers. N is a stipend. O is a stipend for the music department. And that is it. Is there any questions on all those? It's like seven pages of personnel. No questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes. So.
Make a request, you can make a motion if you'd like to.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session, we need to amend the agenda to discuss the concerns of Mr. Gonzalez as he presented those this evening. So Karen, do we need a word that differently?
I've got, I've got the executive session pulled up, if you, the reasoning. Yep.
Yeah, probably. So I would like to put a motion now to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employer official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual unless the employee, official licensee, official licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing by Division G1 of Section 121.22 of Revised Code.
So moved.
Second.
I need a second because he made the motion, right?
Correct, so Roy was the.
Yeah.
Roy was the first and you were the second.
Are we okay with the agenda? Because we did revise it. We're okay?
You can request it at any time, as long as we're even with.
Okay. So at this, at this point, oh, I need a vote on that, right?
Yes.
So roll call, please.
Mr. Gliotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dalton?
Yes.
Okay, we're going, going to enter into executive session at 6:41. We will not be taking any action after we come out of executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. So we will stop the live feed at this time, thank you.